Okay, well, without further ado, we would like to start the meeting. First of all, hello everyone. Thank you so much for joining the final town hall meeting of the Japan Town Cultural District. My name is Nina Bazan Sakamoto and I am the Cultural District Project Manager at the Japan Town Task Force. So the purpose of this meeting is for our team to report back to you about what we heard from our community engagement process for the CHES plan and to also have a discussion and gain feedback on the CHES, which stands for Culture, History, Housing, Economic Sustainability Strategy. And for those of you who are new to this program, the Japan Town Cultural District is a community-wide program to collectively envision and develop strategies for sustaining Japan Town as a thriving cultural hub into the future. So the Cultural Districts are a formalized collaborative partnership with the city and county of San Francisco to stabilize historic communities at risk of gentrification and displacement. Japan Town, a historic neighborhood of over 100 years, has been designated as one of eight Cultural Districts in the city's new initiative. Our fellow Cultural Districts include Filma Filipina, Comptons Transgender, Native American, Castro, African American, LGBTQ Leather and Caibentecotro Latino Cultural Districts. So this program began 10 months ago and since then, we've had a mini-launch event with over 1,000 attendees, eight focus groups, which has cumulatively engaged over 230 participants, two town hall meetings, which has engaged 190 participants, as well as individual interviews with key community members. So this is what informed the CHES plan that we're going to share with you today. And this CHES plan will be implemented over the next few years in Japan Town. The focus group had an emphasis on seven key areas and also included a Japanese-speaking focus group, a young adult focus group, and also a statewide Japan Town focus group. I'm sorry about that. Can you all still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the CHES process was guided by seven key areas mandated by the city, which are Cultural Competency, Land Use, Arts and Culture, Cultural Heritage Conservation and Sustainability, and also Economic Workforce Development, Tenet Protection, and Regenerative Sustainable Resilient Futures. To this date, the team has produced two reports. Some of you may have access on our website and the supplemental CHES draft. There is a supplemental CHES draft and the final CHES, which are essentially two stages of the same document. We hope that you can refer to these as we discuss the strategies in our breakout room today. To give you a little bit more context, the supplemental CHES is a living document which will continue to evolve with your input and feedback. It's currently 130 pages and it is what provides the groundwork for the final CHES. The supplemental CHES takes a comprehensive view on the strategies that would enable the long-term sustainability of Japan Town. So while it includes strategies likely to be implemented in the following two years of the planning grant, it also includes strategies that are likely to take much longer. Our hope is that future projects will build upon the content of this 2020 supplemental CHES report as well as we have done with the 2013 J-CHES report. The team is currently in the process of extracting the most valuable points from the supplemental CHES report and distilling it into the final draft CHES. This will be a more concise visual document that will prioritize and communicate the most important points that have surfaced from this process. I would like to thank all of you for playing an integral role in sharing your vision to ensure Japan Town's bright future. Next, I would like to introduce our Japan Town Task Force Board President, Sandy Mori.
Hi, everyone. I just want to give just a little background about the Japan Town Task Force because our mission on the Task Force is economic development, planning, and preservation of Japan Town, one of the three remaining in America. And this particular project that we're working on now, which is a Cultural District project headed up by Nina, the city had a, what they call, Cultural District Legislation that was put together by Supervisor Hillary Ronan because she really has a strong commitment to preserving the various cultural districts in the city that represent the diversity of San Francisco. And she's trying to avoid gentrification in the different neighborhoods. Japan Town was the first designated Cultural District in San Francisco and as you heard Nina, she told you about the other seven Cultural Districts, which are quite diverse. And so as Nina indicated, this particular process that you have all been participating in is to create a document called, it's the acronym of C-CHES, which means Cultural History, Housing, and Economic Sustainability Strategies. So your participation is key because you're from the community. You represent the community and its interests and its ideas. So thank you very much for your participation. It's very important. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Japan Town Task Force Executive Director, Steve Nakajo.
Thank you very much, Nina. I wanted to officially, on behalf of Japan Town Task Force Cultural District, welcome all of the attendees for today's session. As we narrated, it's been 10 months since we've been in this process and you gain a lot of respect in terms of the interaction, opinions, and the input of the members of the community. And that's what really it's all about. This town hall meeting, as soon as we finish these intros, we're going to go into small breakout groups. But through the process, the whole idea has been inclusion and we wanted to emphasize that as well. Post this town hall, all the way to the Seminole date in mid-July, and it is a living document. Life has been very different when we started this process 10 months ago and I, like you, appreciate each other more than ever before. But the focus of the community certainly comes into play and we still definitely wanted to be able to address recommendations based off the good work of J-CHES and other organizations as well throughout the years. We couldn't have done this without the hard work and cooperation of the team. Nina Bazan Sakamoto is the Project Manager. We have three wonderful, experienced consultants, Mark Izu, Wes Nihae, Lewis Carhar. And we thank everyone for their participation. Look forward to today's session. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Steve. Now, we're going to move into a presentation to report back to you what we heard from the community throughout this whole process and to also explain to you the strategies and how they're going to be accomplished. Host disabled. So I would like to start with the overarching visions and goals. The vision of the Japan Town Cultural District is that San Francisco Japan Town will thrive as a culturally rich, authentic, and economically vibrant neighborhood which will serve as the cultural heart of Japanese and Japanese-American communities for generations to come. So we have the same goals as the J-CHES of 2013, but we have added two new goals: to prevent any further displacement of cultural businesses and organizations; to attract and engage the diversity of the community, including the Japanese-speaking, multiple-identity, younger generation of the Japanese-Japanese American community. So I would like to begin with the seven key areas. We had eight focus groups and one of the key areas was land use. So from this focus group, we heard from the community that Japan Town currently lacks a mechanism to transfer ownership of land within the community. And without community land ownership, it's very difficult to have community determination of the future of Japan Town. I also heard that there was very little affordable housing built in Japan Town after the redevelopment that happened in the 1970s and that transformed the demographic of our community. Currently, Japan Town is 5% Japanese, so we are a commuter community. There was a certificate of preferences issued, but only 4% of the certificate of preferences was used for the community to move back to Japan Town. So compared to communities like the Mission or Chinatown, we have a very different demographic. Another issue that came up was the lack of succession planning for cultural businesses and also that these businesses really need some assistance, especially with the current situation with COVID-19. They need help to get online and, so yes, it's a huge transition for them to get online. Also, another issue that is major is the 2021 covenant expiration for the Japan Center Mall. So that is what keeps the Japanese atmosphere of the Japan Center Mall. Next, I would like to talk about the main things we heard from the art and culture focus groups. So the artists really emphasize that arts is really valuable for transmitting cultural wisdom and it also helps people to dream, envision, and create the future. Artists are the front line and the first responders during times of crisis like this. And artists pave the way when we're in need of a new story. So some needs that came out from the artist community is that there needs to be more synergy and currently not, a lot of the Japan Town's artists are dispersed throughout the Bay Area and kind of lack an opportunity to come into Japan Town. There is not enough of reason for them to come into Japan Town. So when there's events in Japan Town that happen only a few times a year and it's lacking of recurring events that will bring people together on a more consistent basis. Artists have noted that Japan Town needs more life, more music. Japan Town's lacking nightlife. It's important that there's funding for artists. Artists need a space to rehearse and perform. And there needs to be an evolution of cultures through the creation of new arts. So I took everything that, some solutions that came up during these focus groups was that, yes, we need a flexible, multi-use space, a versatile space for these artists to come together. I divided up these solutions in multiple categories. The first category is arts-based recurring micro-event planning and coordination of an arts committee. So again, you know, there's big festivals, but Japan Town is kind of dead the rest of the year. So we need to bring people in on a consistent basis. Maybe some evening art workshops on an ongoing basis could be helpful because people are looking for creative outlets and community and people need to place the plug in. But a lot of people don't know what's going on in Japan Town and even neighbors do not know what's going on in Japan Town at times. So there needs to be like a centralized place where all the information goes, a place where people could share resources and opportunities that are happening, places where interdisciplinary arts opportunities can occur. The next solution that came out of this arts and culture focus group is an Artist Assistance Center. Artists need a platform, incubation, exposure, and fundraising. So this could be a place of capacity building where mentees could become mentors. Artists need help with grant writing and space for performance and just need mentorship in general. So an arts curator or a cultural strategist can help with this. So there could be both online and a physical platform to create more visibility and help these artists get more exposure and funding. Another solution that came out is to expand partnerships and activate space through creative placekeeping. So this could be partnership with tech organizations to help artists get more online capability and exposure, whether it's a media channel where they can host online workshops and events. But also in the physical space, there needs to be, we need to mend the disconnect between the artists and the property and business owners because it is a mutual benefit, it's a mutual enhancement for the artists to do pop-ups in the spaces because it makes the spaces more attractive, which will bring more people into Japan Town. So more partnerships and to use arts to revitalize Japan Town through small events, pop-ups, displays throughout the mall. There could even be an open studio inside the mall if a property owner or business owner is opening up that space. So moving into another key area, we had two focus groups on regenerative, sustainable, resilient futures. And the definition of this is to support movements towards culturally, environmentally, and economically, socially regenerative communities that will be culturally, environmentally, economically, and socially resilient to health, energy, resource, economic, and climate-related disasters while promoting the holistic health and well-being of cultural districts. So a lot of information came out of these groups. But what was really beneficial about the cross-Japan Town group was that we were able to share best practices. Some things that came out of both of these groups is that there needs to be more collaborative, increased, there needs to be coalitions and platforms for increased collaboration and connectivity and increased communication in Japan Town. There needs to be signal boosting, which is highlighting each other and cross-promotion. There needs to be resource sharing within the community. We need peer-to-peer knowledge sharing platforms where different organizations can share best practices and help each other. And also, we're seeing a lot more transition to online platforms and this is somewhere where the younger generations could be empowered and take lead in this transition. It's also important to engage diverse ages, voices, and experience because that will create more resilience. Also, we're seeing a higher utilization of open and outdoor spaces. So we heard from the community that we need more green spaces outdoors and people emphasize the importance of well-planned public spaces. People also are starting to start little gardens at home and want to see this in Japan Town as well. And a lot of the younger generations, they have been advocating for edible gardens in Japan Town. People would also like to see Japanese ecology reflected in Japan Town more and see programming around that. In terms of the built environment, people would like to see more water bottle filling stations so they could bring their water bottles and fill it up. People would like to see, again, more green spaces, edible gardens, and programming around this concept of regenerative resilience. Moving into the next key area, we'll have Wes take over. Wes, are you there?
Wes, you're muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm muted. Muted Zoom. Yes, I'm here. I'm Wes Nihae. I'm here to talk about the overarching challenges that we discovered or we worked out in our research for this CHES document. And I'll just go over these challenges that are on the screen. Oh, do I need to share them? Can you? Are you okay?
Oh, the screen is shared already, Wes.
Thank you. Okay. The first challenge is one voice to speak for Japan Town. Basically, with the coronavirus, the Japan Center Mall's covenant expiration and the Peace Plaza renovation, you know, it's become more clear than ever that in Japan Town, the community needs to be able to have the opportunity to speak as one voice to address problems. And we think certainly the response to these particular issues at this time have shown us that we have that capability. Our next challenge is, of course, the expiration of the Japan Center Mall's covenant, which is coming up in 2021. Japan Town Task Force has already organized an ad hoc Japan Center Mall's technical committee and is addressing this issue. This is the critical issue for the community, as you all know. Businesses, cultural activities, and in fact, the character of the entire neighborhood is looking at change for generations to come. So this is really a major challenge that cuts across all of the areas that we've been looking at. The next challenge is nurture a thriving, vibrant Japan Town-based arts community. Arts and culture is the heart and soul of our community and artists and cultural organizations are struggling, just like small businesses, to survive in the wake of the pandemic. And we support doing all that we can to support arts and cultural organizations. Our next challenge has to do with small businesses and artists. And in our research, actually, artists and small businesses really have common needs. Arts and arts organizations have to operate like small businesses, find sources of, find source, find, develop financial resources and find information. And so the Cultural District is certainly interested in helping artists and small businesses to get the resources they need so they can get through this very difficult time, which is not going to end anytime soon. Our next challenge is to create a unified marketing plan for businesses and cultural activities. And really, this is to address the fact that Japan Town is rich, as we all know, with attractions and businesses that really sustain and enrich our community. Really are the things that bring people into Japan Town. And at this particular time, we have to commend the work of the Japan Town Community Benefit District and the Japan Center Festival Events Committee and other community organizations, which are really trying to promote Japan Town and also to help businesses get through this very difficult time. And the Japan Town Cultural District would like to support collaboration with these groups to market Japan Town and to get people back into the community. Finally, I think Nina just talked about this area, but land and space for growth and development in Japan Town is limited. This is a huge challenge for the future of Japan Town and it's really something that we want to take a close look. It's not something that can be addressed, you know, in the near term, but has to be planned for as a long-term challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Next, we will have Lewis on Cultural Heritage.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being with us. Thanks for joining with us. What I'm going to, I'll try to keep mine really short because I know everybody here can read. So I'm one of these, I'm a teacher, so I don't want to read something that people could read on their own. But what I would like to just point out, at least for the Cultural Heritage part, is at least for the term for cultural heritage and then how our community definitely does fit into a cultural heritage spot. And so if you look at number one, it's going to tell you about the tangible. Then the part, another part is going to be unremovable, intangible, and unnatural. So for the first one, we know we have paintings and sculptures and manuscripts because we have the Oka Collection over at the center. We have Ninjas. We have the JE Library. And then for the immovable objects art, we have, you know, we have Ruthosawa's sculpture pieces right there as, you know, as well as the Peace Plaza. And then for the intangible stuff, it says oral histories and performing arts. So and rituals. And rituals could, I interpret it to mean churches, churches and their activities. And then, you know, the things that they put on, like the bongs every year, seasonal, as no, street fair. And then, but then I also see, I also see it as just that type of growth. And for the natural, although this is a cultural landscape, if you look around, there's a lot of things that represent Japanese, Japanese-ness that you could see that. But then I also see Linda on screen and her odagami is, to me, would fit into that cultural landscape because her business has been there for a very, very long time. You know, if you want to put food in there, we could put food in there, I mean, to make manju. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that we could add into it than just making it sound like it's very academic, a very traditional. It is up to us to define our own, you know, represent who we are. Some of this other stuff, we could talk about it once, if you want to join the Cultural Heritage part. So other than that, I'll talk to you guys later.
Thank you for that, Lewis. Now, we would like to move into overarching challenges with Wes. So this is the challenges that were derived from all of the focus groups. Wes, we would like to spend less than two minutes on this, so please time yourself. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is that where?
Wes, are you there?
I think we may have lost him.
Thank you for us.
Is Wes not here anymore?
I think he already spoke to these challenges earlier.
Okay, then we could skip it then. Okay. Okay, so right now, we're going to spend one minute on each of the overarching strategies and one minute on how they'll be accomplished. So we will try to get through this material as quick as we can. Thank you for bearing with us. So first, our first strategy is a community council. And the community council would be a representative organization which would help create a united voice and a common vision for the Japan Town community. It would be a nonprofit community coalition, a representative organization where religious, cultural, community organizations, businesses, residents, as well as other vested stakeholders have feet at the table. This kind of organization would be helpful in creating more cohesion and coordination in decision-making, advocacy, resource sharing, and planning for Japan Town. So again, the benefits are that it enhances coordination, it enhances a united voice and a common vision for Japan Town, and it also helps address the diversity of our community. So actually, the Japan Town Task Force was a community council between 2001 and 2004. So it does have the underlying functions of that already. So moving into the how this will be accomplished, Japan Town Task Force would be the most suitable organization to develop an arm of the community council because of its current structure, mission, and function. It was a 50-person, 50-member community council from 2001 to 2004. And this coming year, 2020 to 2021, we're facing a lot of challenges and we will be also needing more of a representative coalition. And we're going to have to have greater organizing power because of the things that are coming up in 2020 and 2021. However, it's important to acknowledge the challenges that we had in the past. During this time- During this time when JTF was a community council, decision-making was very cumbersome with 50 members. So I decided to look at similar communities and how, kind of look at how they operate their community councils and look at that as a model. I took a look at Little Tokyo Community Council as well as San Jose Community Congress. So the Little Tokyo Community Council has one full-time staff member, 90 members. However, the Board of Directors has the final decision-making authority and legal authority. So this means that the rest of the membership is an advisory vote. However, even that advisory vote does create, help to create broad-based input, a consensus, and a lot of support for a specific decision while moving very decisively. San Jose Community Congress, on the other hand, has 14 members, but it is an organization, organization of leaders of organizations, meaning that these individuals on their board are representatives of multiple organizations in San Jose. So Japan Town Task Force would probably be the best off modeling after Little Tokyo Community Council. And there wouldn't be too much of a shift. The Board of Directors would still stay the same. What Japan Town Task Force would need to do is reach out to the Japan Town Arts, Cultural, Religious Organizations as well as residents and merchants and request that their representation at the Japan Town Task Force. The timeline for this could take up to one year. Moving on to the next strategy, it is a small business and artist assistance media center. This place would help to create, enhance an online platform and offer coaching and incubation to both artists and small businesses. Both existing small businesses as well as emerging. And it will help to increase interconnectivity, visibility, and also can house an online Japan Town shopping platform, an integrated shopping platform. It would help, so again, it would help businesses by coaching them and incubating them, helping them get a lot online, helping businesses and artists gain visibility. A media center could also allow the artists to have a channel and host workshops and events. And this could have many functions where this online platform could be used to connect artists and share resources. So how this would, how this can occur is that we would definitely need assistance of someone, someone with experience in business consulting, as well as someone that is tech savvy. This, there, there could be different scenarios of this, depending on the level of partnership. But there are many opportunities, I mean, there are many options. Moving on. The third strategy is to develop an intergenerational, co-creative, co-working, multi-use arts gathering space with a gallery. So essentially, it is what the artists were talking about, what they needed. It would also house art-based micro event programming, which is both physical and online. So this space would be a versatile, flexible space that could serve as a maker space, a studio space, a workshop space, an intergenerational gathering and hangout space, gallery exhibition space, collaborative co-working space, and entrepreneurship coaching space, performance art space, rehearsal space, event space, conference space, pop-up space for vendors, nonprofit office spaces, and also have a community garden. So there are four words that came out of this for me, which is tradition, innovation, evolution, and a platform. So this place could be a place where there's, it is a place where there could be the transmission of traditional knowledge so that this, the wisdom and the spirituality in Japanese culture could be transmitted to the next generation. But it's also a place where innovation can thrive because people could co-work during the day and it is a culturally, culturally relevant environment for innovation, collaboration, and social entrepreneurship. It's also a place for evolution because it allows people to think creatively and bridge tradition to innovation. So how this will be accomplished will be covered in one minute by Lewis. Thank you.
I'm using up my minute just to try and unmute myself. What I would, what I would like you guys to look at, once again, I'm not going to read, read the slide to you. But then if you were to look at how, how to make Japan Town and the environment that expressive and then, and then now I moved in, now they moved on to something else. But anyway, let me finish up my thought there. I want you guys to think about some of the key areas there, the door. I mean, these are doors, but a lot of these doors we've been through already. You guys have been to almost anybody I see here, we have been through these doors. Maybe not together, but we have been through the doors. So my main point, at least for this part, for this slide here, is we do not have to reinvent the wheel. And, you know, we could all do this together and, you know, because we kind of know what we want to do. All we need to do is sort of start recruiting more people and, you know, just to update the ideas. And by looking at the screen, I see all these young faces. Not, not this one here, but I see a lot of young faces that, that, that could help recruit and help lead us. So, so I think with that, with a, with a cultural gathering point, a creative place, we have that. It's just that now we have to formalize it.
Nina, hold.
Okay. So moving on. The next strategy is to develop a strategic plan to address the 2021 expiration of the Japan Center Mall and to negotiate benefits agreements with the owners. So Japan Town Task Force has established the Japan Center Mall Technical Committee, JCMTC, and they will be negotiating with the various property owners of the Japan Center malls between Laguna and Fillmore. So yes, the committee has expressed that this is one of the most pressing issues in Japan Town. And yes, it's important that the whole community, their, their needs are reflected in any community benefits agreement, which is why in the chat, we recommend conducting a community needs assessment, engaging in a Japan Town master plan process, and to create plans to reduce harm to small businesses inside and surrounding the malls if there happens to be construction in the future. So we are talking about the necessity to engage the community. Although the JCMTC will be negotiating with the Japan Center malls, the, the community council will be very helpful in providing the needs of the community. So again, it would be important to have a comprehensive community needs assessment. And the Japan Town Master Plan will also help the community create a collective vision for the built environment of Japan Town. And the committee council will help create a united voice about what the community needs. The next strategy is to establish a visitor kiosk in the Japan Center Mall. So the kiosk will be a place which is already being built by 3D Investments. And this place will be in front of Maeve Cafe, in front of the Maeve Cafe, and it will help provide information about local San Francisco Japan Town as well as trips to Japan. So this place could also house the Small Business Assistance Center. It could be a physical satellite location for that, as well as the intergenerational co-creating gathering space, which could help coordinate artists to get to spaces and people to get to spaces, whether inside the mall or in the neighborhood. Also, it could, it should, there should be a partnership with the JICC, which is Japan Information and Cultural Center, which is a branch of the Japanese consulate. They are, they provide rich information about Japan and would be the best at providing this information. So there should be a partnership with them. There should also be a partnership with JCCNC, Japan, Japanese Chamber of Commerce of Northern California. There are actually a lot of Japanese businesses looking to open up shop in America because the American market is a lot bigger than the Japanese market. And there is actually a statistic that Japanese businesses have dramatically increased. So there is a lot of, a lot of businesses are looking for opportunities. It's about creating a space where people can gain information and plug in. So how this will be accomplished, Wes, can you take 30 seconds to go over that, please?
I can. 30 seconds, yes. Well, luckily, 3D Investments has been very supportive of this idea and have already agreed to build a kiosk and give a space in the Japan Center Mall. Really, there's a lot of upfront research that has to be done so that the, so that the kiosk can provide the type of information Nina just described. But an important function really is for it to be a forward-facing community presence for the Japan Town Cultural District and the Japan Town Task Force and to eventually establish a strong connection with our resource center and to provide visitor information about Japan Town via base where people can come to find everything they would like to know or would need to know about Japan Town and also find out other things that are going on in the city related to Japanese and Japanese-American arts and culture and, and, and history as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Okay, so the next strategy is develop a Japan Town Master Plan. This will include A, B, C, and D, and E. Part of this would be regenerative, sustainable, resilient Japan Town, which is Midori Japan Town. Midori means green. And then C would be expanding, connecting Japan Town beyond physical borders, for example, the Japanese Tea Garden. And then D is supporting improvements to Peace Plaza, and E is supporting improvements to Buchanan Mall. So just to review, a master plan is an urban planning term, and it basically is a long-term plan to guide the future growth and development in a neighborhood. Historically, Japan Town has never had a full, comprehensive master plan that was directed by the community. The last time Japan Town had a master plan was the redevelopment, which shaped the community with very little regard to the existing social, economic, and physical fabric. We cannot let that happen again. That's why it's important that the community comes together and creates a collective vision of what they want Japan Town to look like. That way, when developers come, they can show that to them. I'm sorry, I'm going to skip this. We are running out of time, so we'll skip that. Well, actually, so like I said, how we would do the master plan is that we would, you could choose a level of complexity that you would like to have. And this will require multidisciplinary, multidisciplinary groups of experts and will cost time and funding. But you could choose the level of complexity desired. So the less complex it is, the less work it is. So I, the CHES recommends that to start with a simple master plan. We can also seek the assistance of the SF Planning Department to help out with this. And then for the B, regenerative, sustainable, resilient Japan Town, the CHES recommends to declare Midori Japan Town, Japan Town as a regenerative Japan Town. Through declaring this, we can gain partnerships and move in that direction. So we could develop programming in the co-creative space around Japan's ecology and also partner with the San Francisco Planning Department Sustainable Neighborhoods Initiative because they have been working in neighborhoods like Chinatown and Soma to enhance the sustainability of a neighborhood in a culturally sensitive way. Lewis, if you could spend 30 seconds on C, D, and E, just to explain to us what needs to get done.
For C, it, it means like, it means we need to not think of Japan Town, J-Town, just a four-block radius. We know it's bigger. We know it's bigger. And we know it once was bigger. So, so we need to get out of that thought that we're this four, small, four-block space because we're not. A lot of the stuff may also run out to like the tea gardens. It may go out to Presidio with the MIS museum. So, and so we have to stop thinking that we're only four blocks. And remember, we, J-Town is also over on the jury side, other, you know, and so, and so we have to think past that. Buchanan, the Y is over there. For D, the kiosk center is going to be really important because that is going to be the center is, if we have any kind of visitors, any kind of tourists, tourism. I know that's a scary and nasty word among a lot of us, but then it's, I feel that tourism will help a lot of small businesses find another market. For, and for E, improvement is Midori Japan Town. We need that one area. We need the Cannon Mall, the Osaka Way, which I didn't know it was called that until recently, Osaka Way. We need that path there to be much smoother for, and for people could move around in because for seniors and for people with disabilities, it's hard to move around in that area because, because of the pavement. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lewis. Moving into strategy, establish a community development corporation, community land trust, or community impact fund. Either one of those three. So we determined that this is an important strategy, number one, because it has been identified as a priority strategy in previous Japan Town reports. For example, the J-CHES, it was actually charted as the most effective tool. And it looked like it addressed 22 out of the 25 areas of concerns identified. Also, there is a necessity to identify these vulnerable spaces in Japan Town and where there is opportunity for development by the community. It is important to, for the community to control land and have a mechanism of transferring land into tree ownership so that it can have self-determination into the future. So how to establish either one of these three is that it will take adequate funding and expertise. This strategy will have to be accomplished over a longer timeline. It will not be accomplished in the two years of this planning grant. However, it is still important to take the necessary steps towards it because it has been identified as a key necessity in Japan Town for decades. So it would definitely benefit Japan Town because it would, well, if Japan Town were to go with a land trust, it should choose to have additional functions such as economic development assistance. But if Japan Town were to choose a CDC, a smaller-scale CDC would be more beneficial to Japan Town. Another model to look at is the Little Tokyo Community Impact Fund, which is a social purpose corporation. And it's a real estate investment fund that is seeking to purchase and manage properties for the purpose of supporting heritage-based businesses and properties. for the purpose of supporting heritage-based businesses and properties. So by having a community land trust or one of these options, you can actually have more flexibility and serve the purpose of offering below-market rate rent to culturally community-based businesses and organizations and keep that heritage-based function in Japan Town. That's why it's so important to control real estate within the community to help keep gentrification from changing the cultural identity and landscape of Japan Town. Historically, Japan Town did have Niho Machi Community Development Corporation during the redevelopment era, which bought four blocks from the redevelopment agency and redistributed it mostly among merchants. And that's where the idea of four blocks in Japan Town comes from. Historically, there was an organization called Citizens Against Niho Machi Eviction, CAINE, and they actually involved into JPCA and formed a nonprofit CDC named J, Japanese Community United for Housing, JCA. They have the right idea of developing low-to-moderate income housing in Niho Machi because after redevelopment, Japan Town was lacking housing. However, they did not succeed because the lack of broad-based community support and also political opposition from within the community. Although they did have, they did begin determining sites with the redevelopment agency for low-income housing. So that failed in the, in the past. So that just goes to show that Japan Town has been needing this function for a long time. The most important thing is to have broad-based community support, and that's what was lacking before. Funding and broad-based community-based support. There is a valuable report out there called Japan Town Community Land Trust Business Planning Assumptions, published in 2013, which the JCCNC has graciously shared with us to read. And this report recommended that Japan Town should establish a CD, a community land trust as soon as sufficient funding is available. And then also that it should, it's be established under an existing nonprofit organization. So it would be up to the community to decide which that organization would be. But Japan Town Task Force's mission and functions align very closely with a CDC or a CLT. It would be important that people take a look at this report because it actually is a business plan. It has multiple scenarios and budgets and is very detailed about how to establish a community land trust. So the, the next step for the committee would be to determine if a CDC or a community land trust or a community impact fund is desired, the appropriate model and scale. There will need to be engagement, education, and outreach to gain widespread support. And then also, we would need to identify sources of funding in the formation plan. The very last strategy that we're going to go over is culturally competent affordable housing with preferences. And we're saying preferences because Japan Town only has 5% Japanese population. And there's a historical reason for that. This would give preferences for descendants of those certificate of preferences holders, community-based artists, younger generation seniors, families, and employees of community-based, community-based nonprofit workers. It's getting difficult for them to even stay in San Francisco. So yes, a CDC or CLT could be very helpful in developing this kind of housing in Japan Town. Again, this will also be accomplished over a longer term. It will not be accomplished within the two years of a planning grant. It will be a longer-term project. So how this will be done will be covered by Wes and then we will move into the breakout groups after this. So thank you for bearing with us.
Sorry. Thanks, Nina. Yes, Nina is exactly right. This is a long-term strategy. It's a long-term project. It's a generational, we're making generational decisions for Japan Town. And really, over the course of two years, it is a lot of planning and a lot of research and a lot of trying to just determine what are, what direction the community can take, what the goals will be eventually. But mainly, what it takes is dedicated leadership and people with vision. Unfortunately, in the community, we have good people, resources. It's a matter of rallying our resources and trying to set our sights on what we think the future of Japan Town could be. And fortunately, we have examples. We see that in Little Tokyo and in San Jose, Japan Town. Those Japanese-American communities have taken steps to develop housing. And so we have good, we have models and we have the idea that this can happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Wes. I missed one last thing, but basically it is that we need to increase our partnership fundraising and marketing capacity because we need to support these CHS strategies. And we are dependent on city funding right now, but we need to develop a business plan and revenue streams for sustainability of these strategies. How this could be done is mainly through a fundraising director. But we cannot approach fundraising in a traditional way. It needs to be beyond the conventional forms of fundraising, of scraping within your community. But it needs to be about engaging people outside of the community to resonate with Japan Town stories and value and to have interesting programs that people want to be a partner in, that people want to invest in. So it really very much ties into this visibility, marketing, and partnership. So yes, how this will be done could be done through hiring a fundraising expert and definitely increasing our communication to get our story out there and engage many forms of support. I also want to note that this is not about charity, but it's about co-creating collective abundance and creating things that people want to be a part of. So with that being said, that is all of the strategies. I would like to just show you one thing, which is the CHS timeline tree. Essentially, what it is doing is showing a tree because I believe that things grow like a tree. And the first thing that needs to be done is to enhance inner interconnectivity, interconnectivity within the community. So the first step would be community council. And then the second step is interconnectivity with the broader community, with creative placekeeping. So that would involve the strategies of the cultural, co-creative, multi-use space, the kiosk, the visitor kiosk, and the Small Business Assistance, Artist Assistance Center. And then after that, we can move into bigger things. Now that we have broader-based support, a united voice, and interconnectivity within our immediate community and our broader community, we could take on bigger challenges like, you know, addressing the Japan Center Mall issue, like developing a Japan Town master plan, like even developing a community development corporation, and developing affordable housing. So that's, we need to be step by step. You know, a tree doesn't grow overnight, but we need to grow the roots so that we can expand up. So that is what our timeline looks like. And now we would like to move into the breakout group. I hope that many of you have reviewed your email and have decided which breakout group you would like to be in. If you're not sure, please refer to this screen. If you could, for those of you who have not been pre-assigned, please type, actually, everybody, please type in the chat which room you would like to be in. And Max or technical assistant will move you into that room. So thank you very much for listening to this presentation, and we will see you in the breakout room.
Nina, there have been some questions in the chat. Will you be addressing those now or at a later time?
Let me stop the share to do that. Let's see. No, I will not be addressing the questions right now. I will take the breakout rooms as a time to review your questions. I would like to get all of you into your groups now. So yes, I see everyone commenting. Please continue to comment which group you would like to be in, and Max will move you in there. Thank you. All right. Max, are you there?
Yeah, Nina, can you make me host so I could control the breakouts?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Let's see here. I don't know about that. Max. Okay, you are the host.
Nina, some people need to see the room list again so they know where they would like to go.
Sure. Oh, Max, can you make me the co-host, please?
One second.
Okay, awesome. Hey. Is everyone able to see the screen? Max, is it working out?
Yeah, I'm currently adding everybody. Just bear with me.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Hi. Hello.
Hey, Max, I just wanted to check in with you. How?
So I'm, I'm still adding. Would you like me to get them started and just continue to add people as they add in the chat?
Has everyone, okay. Has everyone indicated which room they would like to be in?
Yeah, Max, that's probably a good idea. And as you add people, then I think it'll be easier to filter out the ones who haven't selected a room yet.
It seems like there's a lot of people in the main room still.
Where do you indicate to get into the room?
Can you just type in the chat which room you would like to be in?
Room two, please.
What does each room do? There's no label.
So the strategies are beneath each room.
Nina, I'm gonna start the breakout rooms right now, if that's okay.
How much time?
Okay, yes.
How much time do we have?
We will come back at 5:55. We are not gonna do the report back anymore.
You know, are we in the breakout room set?
Um, Max, you have started the breakout room?
Yeah, so all of those unassigned, just bear with me. There's a lot of requests, so I'm adding you as I go through the chat. Thank you. And those who've been requested to join already, please join your, your breakout room.
Wait, if we sent an email, do you, have we already been assigned?
Glennis, I could add you right now. Which group would you?
Whatever two, I think it's master plan. Is that group two?
Yes, I'll add you.
What are the different groups? So we don't, I forgot, I missed. And it's not there now. So what are the five groups? What, what do we each discuss?
So I will go ahead and type in the chat briefly, one second.
And Max, this is Lucy. You don't have me going to group three and I should be in two because I'm the note taker for group two.
Okay, I've added you to number two.
Great, thanks.
And Max, this is Alice Kahatsu. I'm the facilitator for room three.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go to my break room, my number three.
Are those still waiting? Thank you for your patience. No easy way to do this.
Max, how do you get into your breakout room?
So when I assign it, you should receive a notification. If you haven't received it yet, it means I haven't assigned it. So just give me a second. Um, those still waiting, if you could possibly type which number in the chat again. Um, sorry, it's just hard to keep up with, thank you very much.
Max, this is Daryl, I'm the recorder for number five.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, there's a few of you still waiting. Again, if you could just type it, type which number group you like in the chat. I'm going as fast as I can, thank you.
Hi, is everybody starting up on this event? Or, I'm in group five or?
Uh, yes, I've added you to the group. Did you receive a request? Okay, I think that's everyone, Nina. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I thought, how about Kyle?
Uh, Kyle didn't request a room.
Oh, you already assigned Kyle?
He didn't, he didn't request the room in the chat.
Okay, Kyle, if you're there. Okay, how about Marco?
Yeah, also didn't receive one for Marco.
Okay, got it, okay.
Number two, please. Room two.
Two.
Number two.
Okay, sorry that took so long.
Oh, thank you so much, Max. Oh, is Sheridan still here?
Yeah, um, yeah, I got in the wrong group, I should be room three, sorry.
Number three, okay.
Sorry, I got in the wrong group then.
Don't worry.
Sorry. Is that ready now? I could join in now? Yeah.
Yeah, Max should be assigning you to group three. Um, okay, so I guess everyone is in their group. Except for Kyle and Guyron.
Uh, yeah, whoever just joined.
Okay. Okay. I think, uh, Max, I'm gonna reclaim host. That's okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much for your hard work.
Sure, no problem.
Okay. More. Okay, I'm gonna broadcast from that page.
Does this mean I could talk to both of you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Nina, you're off.
Oh.
I think you're signed in on two accounts.
Yeah, I am signed in on two accounts, actually, yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
What do you want to do about the groups who want to extend it 15 more minutes, the total program or what?
Yeah, I would love to do that, I think that people would probably appreciate that as well.
How would you communicate that to the groups?
I can do a broadcast.
Okay, what do you guys think? You guys want to do that? Because it makes sense, the last guy just got placed, it's about 5:20. But at least everybody's in, so to come back out at 5:55 seems a little bit unreasonable.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to bring them back out about 5:10 or something, I don't know, what do you think? I'm trying to.
Yeah, I think that. 5:10 would give them like 40 minutes, so maybe that's, that's, that's good, huh, or 5:15?
You want to give it to 5:15, then bring them back for a five-minute closure?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, what do you think, Max?
Uh, sure, me, me six fifteen, right?
Yeah, that'll give them what, Nina, hour, hour for discussion or forty, fifty minutes about?
That would give them pretty much, um. Yeah, like forty-five minutes.
Okay. Why don't you do that, why don't you do? Yeah, why don't you do an extension, I mean, people should understand, it took a little while. Appreciate it, Max, but everybody's in, so if everybody's in now, the question, because it's usually the rest of the time for quality. So, if you're gonna do a general announcement, give them more time, you're bringing everyone back out, at what time you said, 5:10?
5:15 and then do a five-minute closing.
Okay, 5:15 and you do, you do a five-minute closure, absolutely five minutes, no more than that. But this, by this time, they should be pretty involved.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna mute myself and get off. I'll just wait for you. I could stay on here, right, Max, and you guys will all come back, right?
Yeah, we'll be here.
Okay, I'm gonna be here too, just gonna mute myself.
Okay, thanks Steve.
You're welcome.
Could you make me co-host again, just in case anyone else joins?
Absolutely. Wait one second.
Hey, hi. I, I missed the announcement to go into different groups. I want to go to group five, how would I do that?
Um, I will put you in group five, yeah, give me just one second.
Thank you.
Okay, and Kyle, I just wanted to let you know, we've decided to extend the meeting until 6:15, so you could stay in your breakout group if you'd like until 6:15 and then we'll have a five-minute closing to conclude the town hall at 6:20. I just wanted to give you a heads up if you're open for that. All right, um. Actually, Max, how, how do you add people to a group? I actually don't even, I don't even know how to do it, so I will.
You see the?
Yeah.
Highlighted blue number next to the name of the group. You could, if you hover over it, it'll give you a list of the names of the participants left in the main room.
Really? Wait, where, where do I go?
So in the breakout room section, to the very right, the very far right, there's a blue number indicator that shows the number of participants. If you hover over with your mouse, you should see the list of people that are still in.
Okay, 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 um. Um, you know, I'm just gonna make you host really quick, Max.
Okay.
Are you able to?
Yeah. You said number five, correct? Okay.
All right, so Brandon's requesting me to go help him out room one, so I'm gonna try to go over there.
Okay, sounds good.
If you could make me host again, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Hey, Max.
Yeah.
So when we bring these guys back at 5:15, she makes that announcement, but is there a countdown clock or something? With these guys in the group or? It's just that by the time it's five, six, I mean, six ten, I mean, six fifteen. How do they know when to come back?
So whenever, whenever Nina closes the actual breakout rooms, it'll give every single person sixty seconds to leave. And by the end of the sixty seconds, it'll kick everyone out and move them back into the main lobby.
Yeah, so she already made her announcement about extension of time?
Uh, yeah, uh, she put it in the chat, I believe.
Okay, because then those who got a bug out, they'll bug out, they'll just drop off and leave, right? Those who stay, stay, right?
Uh, yeah, I guess so.
How many attendants did we have, man, number wise?
Um, I'm not too sure, it won't let me, uh, it won't let me pull up the list anymore.
Yeah. Some like about sixty, you think?
Uh, I would, yeah, I would say like sixty-five percent.
Okay, all right. So you're just gonna monitor until 6:15?
Yeah, I guess I'll just.
All right, so I'm gonna hang a little bit, but I'm gonna turn off the camera and the mic there.
Did you see, uh, you see the correspondence with Kyle, it looks like they got the letter done.
Say that again?
I don't know if you saw the, the email correspondence with, with what's his name, Kyle Smiley, it looks like the, uh, they got the letter of support for.
Yeah, I noticed that he responds to you in a timely manner.
Right, yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah, so it sounds like that last material you gave Onisha, I guess he got enough to write it all.
Yeah, it looks like it.
It's probably better for, probably better for us to have a copy, right?
Yeah.
All right, all right, so anyway, we're getting close with the dude, man. All right. I'll be back, man.
Bye.
Hey Max.
Yeah, it's up.
You can put me in one of these groups and then I could just slide in and listen?
I actually can't. I don't have the, I don't have the host ability anymore.
Okay, that's right. Nina got it, right?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, that's cool. That answers my question. I was gonna try to slide in between and see if that was possible, but that's cool. Alright.
Okay, I'll see you in a minute.
Later. Hey Max.
Yeah.
Nina's been out all this time?
Um, yeah, I think still in the, in one of the groups. Looks like there's five minutes left.
Okay, so what did you tell me? These guys automatically gonna know when they come back?
Yeah, as soon as Nina closes it, everyone will automatically move back into this room. So people will start popping up in like the next five minutes or so whenever Nina ends up finishing.
You want, you got a way to get, get all the Nina to give her a five-minute heads-up?
Um, yeah, I can text her.
Cause we have 6:10 now, man.
Yeah.
We will give her a five-minute queue and a three-minute queue.
Okay.
Or two-minute queue.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe a 5:31. You've been going to classes all this time, man?
Yeah, yes, it's been kinda tough. It's a lot of work, but trying to keep up.
So there's certain times like you gotta go class, like you go on campus, like you gotta go nine to 12 or something?
Yeah, they have, it's kinda, it's kinda been random pretty much. They've had certain days where we have like the online lectures like this face-to-face and then some of it's like just pre-recorded. But you know, they condense an entire semester into like four, four or five weeks, so.
So when you take the course, you could take it any time of the day or you gotta do it when they say like nine or you could do it later or what?
Yeah, it's, it's just, I mean, it varies from class to class, but my assignments have pretty much been Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So yeah, I mean, everything's pretty much lined up. You know, he gave us like a pretty, you know, solid outline beginning of the semester. So I've, you know, just been doing my best to try and stay on top of things, get stuff done early.
Yeah. So when they ask you to do something like a assignment, you gotta write it and submit it electronically? Is that what's up?
Yeah, exactly.
Alright. She get back to you?
Uh, no, she hasn't really been responding to my texts.
If she don't respond to you in the text, how do you get to her, to this system? You know where she is?
Uh, I can't, I can't contact her directly.
Yeah. She said something about she was gonna go Brandon's room?
Right. I think, yeah, I think that's where she might be, but I don't, I don't know. I don't have any way of knowing.
Okay. I'm gonna try to text her on my side, man. You got 6:13 over there with you?
Yeah.
Might have to call her, man, just to bugger.
DM as well.
Yeah, Max.
Yeah.
I forgot it was 6:15, huh? It ain't six o'clock, huh?
6:15, yeah.
That's when she's coming back, okay. I'm gonna ask her if she wants to queue. I got her, I got her attention. What time is this thing over? She said 6:15, right?
Yeah, 6:15.
It's 6:15, ain't it?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna tell her ended, man, alright? She says people are still deep in their conversation. Do you, let me try to get hold of Nina to try to get these groups in here, even though it's sporadic.
Is there, is there anything left in the meeting tonight?
Uh, just a five-minute summary, meaning, uh, an, an end statement from Nina's side. Hey, uh, Max, can you get all the Nina, see if she can get out?
Sure.
Brandon, did you come in from this group as well? Wesley, are you out of your group?
Me, Wes, and Christina from group one.
Okay. So we'll try to get Nina out of her group. We know we told her when to come back six-five-five, but we're gonna try to get her out.
Do we still have a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds?
Sure you do. You can, you got, you got kill time right now, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll be right back.
I thought it was gonna be something profound. I guess that's profound as well. So Kyle, and Marke, and Kenta, and Brenda, and Susan, you all were in the same group together?
Yeah, we had a great discussion, um, pretty interesting. When it comes down to it, a lot of this has to do with the community agreeing on a set of values and objectives. And that a lot of these strategies will naturally form around, you know, what is it that you're trying to achieve as a community? And it's not, and it's not one, there, there's, there's many different approaches to the same problem, so it's really interesting.
Yeah, and, you know, we're lucky perhaps to have a few minutes at this time as well because of, you know, Brenda, Kyle, and Marke, and Susan, in terms of, uh, Brandon. Because if for me, in terms of JTF as the executive director with this cultural issue, after ten months, uh, we had a, basically studied the chess recommendations, and then lined that up with the seven key areas, and it's been really, really a struggle to do that, but like I was gonna tell the group that the assignment was to get inclusion and feedback, and so at this end of this session, um, what I'm seeing is that maybe a lot of us folks had the same kind of concepts and concerns, but we weren't able to jointly collectively express it. Is that, is that anywhere near like, Marke, you're in Vancouver, and here we are in San Francisco's Japan Town? There's gotta be some similarities or some differences, or, you know, so I, as a director, I'm trying to make sure as we go in the second year that we're on an implementational stage. What do you think?
Well, you, you really moved along, Steve, and, uh, since I, I, I was in San Francisco a year ago, I'm very impressed. Certainly that report you guys put out was pretty comprehensive, and all the sessions. I wish every success. And Brenda, I, Brenda, I sent you an email privately, asking you for your email address, please.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, real interesting, cause you live your life in your communities, but you, you know, there's some folks who go get a PhD at a university for something, studies Asian Pacific Studies, Japanese Studies, but this piece is a real grassroots developed piece, you know, and so, um, it's kinda interesting that you go through your community experiences, whether it's seniors or children or whatever, but, um, the interpretation comes out a little bit differently. Daryl, you guys came out of your group?
Our group is done, I think.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was just remarking this, and talking story with a lot of folks here, and tell what their main group comes back out about various things. Kenta was talking about how interesting it is.
Yeah, group number three, um, was really interesting too, and, um, it was just an honor to, to be in the same room with, um, these talented people, so I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Steve, and, and Lauren, and, um, Wes, and Louis, and, you know, uh, Nina, uh, you know, all, all the people that worked so hard, uh, to make this happen, so thank you for that, and Max too, thank you so much.
I see that Nina's back, so I'm gonna throw it back to Nina, and hopefully we're all back to go into some conclusion, and I don't know if you still wanna do a few minutes, or past the hour. I don't know how far more we wanna go, and I just think we should try to end in some kind of timely manner, but I'm gonna throw it back to you, Nina, and see where we wanna progress. Your microphone's off, Nina.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. So it looks like everyone is back in the main room from the, uh, breakout group. So first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone back, and thank you so much for engaging in these robust conversations. Um, we really appreciate you all joining our final town hall meeting. Uh, and your valuable feedback on the strategies have been thoroughly recorded, and will, will be incorporated into the final edits of the chess. Um, our projected date to submit our final draft chess to M O C D for some feedback is July twentieth, and then we'll wait to receive that feedback from them and incorporate that feedback. Uh, until then, we'll continue to update both versions of our chess, uh, supplemental and the draft final, uh, which will continuously be available on our website for your review. So we'll continue to update the most current version of our website. Um, please don't have, hesitate to offer feedback even after this town hall meeting. I know that it probably wasn't enough time to offer feedback, so we're looking forward to continuously engaging with you. Um, in terms of the timeline, uh, in August, we will be incorporating the feedback from the department while working with them to develop the city data and demographic snapshot section of Japan Town, and the final look of the chess. And then the final chess is projected to be up, up for approval by the Board of Supervisors in mid-September. Uh, we'll certainly need your involvement for advocating for the approval of the chess by the Board of Supervisors, so that we'll have full support to start implementing the strategies this year. Um, later in the timeline, we plan to have our grand launch event in October, uh, to showcase our local artists of our community, kickstart the implementation phase, and celebrate Japan Town's accomplishments. Uh, lastly, for those of you who didn't get to register for this town hall meeting, uh, please do comment in the comment box, uh, in the chat function, your email, so that we can continue to reach and update you. Um, you can always email us and submit ideas on the forum on our website as well, and, uh, please do also find us on Facebook and Instagram if you haven't already. Um, and again, thank you so much for joining today, because your input is so valuable for sustaining Japan Town into the future. So, um, I'm looking forward to reviewing everything that came out of this group, and, uh, please let me know if there's anything else you need. I, I know that some of you have mentioned, hey, this isn't enough time, an hour is not enough time, so please just let me know what it is that you need, so we can accommodate that. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for joining today. Um, I, uh, it's up to you, I can leave this group open if you wanted to exchange, um, and share what was talked about in your groups, uh, but I'm also aware that some people might have to leave, so I just wanted to leave it open that way as well. So, um, thank you everyone so much.
Yeah, we were instructed that each group was going to have a representative to report, you know, give a short summary or report on what each group had a conversation about, because some of us weren't able to attend as many, you know, cause there are some other areas of interest for me, but I had to pick one. So it'd be interesting to me to find out what the other, other groups were talking about.
Yeah, well, initially, we were gonna have three minutes, so if anyone has to leave, uh, please do feel free to leave, but, um, you know, it seems like a lot of people may be interested in taking three minutes per group, so I would definitely like to leave it open for that. So, uh, let's, uh, let's just, uh, give it a shot. Can we start with, uh, the first group, Business and Artist Assistance Center, kiosk?
So, for group one, our spokesperson, our spokesperson will be Christina. Christina?
Hi, yes. Okay, so for the Small Business and Artists Group, uh, we had a really good discussion about the kiosk and the virtual marketplace, and the really important aspects that we covered were having a centralized resource for, um, artists and businesses, and even community centers, um, doctors, lawyers, to have like a, a main directory for all the information, even not just in San Francisco, Japan Town, but for the broader, um, Bay Area as well, for Japanese, Japanese-American businesses, to collaborate and, um, for artists to find mentors and funding, and just, uh, to activate spaces in Japan Town.
Thank you, Christina.
So, yeah, that was actually forty-five seconds, so thank you so much. Um, if you want to add more, please feel free to, but, um, I'm sure that's great for everybody too, so. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll speak for group two. There were nine of us in the group, and, um, we were, we had everything on the list from the, from the master plan to, um, to a Green Japan Town, to supporting the, the Peace Plaza, and, and actually, our conversation did cover the waterfront, just like that did, and, and we started with, um, talking about the master plan, but then quickly realized that that's such a huge undertaking, that we ended up talking about, um, other things that would make, make Japan Town more, um, inviting not only to the, to people who live there, but also to tourists. So, uh, we talked about a number of marketing ideas, um, making Japan Town more connected with, uh, the tea garden. Um, Mark Izu, for example, talked about opening the garden at night and having ghost stories, but we also spoke about, um, about a lot of things happening over the years, and, and the, um, people not being able to really come together with a, a set of, of agreed-upon, um, strategies and goals. So that really needs to be worked on. Uh, the last thing I think, um, was that there, we talked about some of the history of Japan Town, and, and how, um, uh, things like, um, redoing the Osaka Way started with, uh, a lot of ideas and a lot of money spent, but in the end, nothing being, uh, being able to, to, um, to complete that, that task, but it was a very robust discussion, people all, um, participated. Um, and it, um, we got to know each other and, and actually these, these issues pretty well. So it was a great group.
Thank you so much, Lucy. Um, next group would be the Co-Creative Gathering Space and, uh, fundraising, fundraising, yes.
Hi, um, this is one time when I didn't take notes, and I wish I did, but I was so enthralled in our, our group discussion, we were blessed to have so many, um, great talented artists and, and people in marketing, so, um, some of the things that we spoke about, um, were, um, you know, the marketing strategies of being able to, uh, do more, um, now that the COVID is, um, you know, upon us, to do more of this type of thing, and, uh, a lot of more Zoom-type things where we can reach out, um, save money on travel, and be able to offer classes and, um, workshops and, um, uh, groups where we can all talk together and come to, um, kind of, uh, creative ways to create things. So, uh, we talked about that, and we also spoke about the fundraising part of it. Um, you know, our, our community is doing so many different types of fundraising. I come from a church background, and a community, um, the community center is doing fundraising, and JTF is doing fundraising, so we talked about different levels of fundraising, not only within our community, but also outside of the communities, um, where we could get sponsorships for different programs and, um, different events, and, um, and that's another way of bringing other people into our community and sharing in arts and culture and history. Um, and then we, we went into the micro-events and programming and having.
So for group one, our spokesperson will be Christina. Christina?
Hi, yes. Okay, so for the Small Business and Artist Group, we had a really good discussion about the kiosk in the virtual marketplace. And the really important aspects that we covered were having a centralized resource for artists and businesses and even community centers, doctors, lawyers, to have like a main directory for all the information, even not just in San Francisco, Japan Town, but for the broader Bay Area as well, for Japanese, Japanese American businesses to collaborate and for artists to find mentors and funding and just to activate spaces in Japan Town.
Thank you, Christina.
So yeah, that was actually 45 seconds. So thank you so much. If you want to add more, please feel free to, but I'm sure that's great for everybody, too. So thank you.
Okay, so I'll speak for group two. There were nine of us in the group. And we were, we had everything on the list from the, from the master plan to, to a Green Japan Town, to supporting the Peace Plaza. And, and actually, our conversation did cover the waterfront, just like that did. And we started with talking about the master plan, but then quickly realized that that's such a huge undertaking that we ended up talking about other things that would make, make Japan Town more inviting, not only to the, to people who live there, but also to tourists. So we talked about a number of marketing ideas, making Japan Town more connected with the tea garden. Mark Izu, for example, talked about opening the garden at night and having ghost stories. But we also spoke about, about a lot of things happening over the years and, and the people not being able to really come together with a set of agreed upon strategies and goals. So that really needs to be worked on. The last thing I think was that there, we talked about some of the history of Japan Town and, and how things like redoing the Osaka Way started with a lot of ideas and a lot of money spent, but in the end, nothing being, being able to, to, to complete that, that task. But it was a very robust discussion. People all participated. And it, we got to know each other and, and actually these, these issues pretty well. So it was a great group.
Thank you so much, Lucy. Next group would be the Co-Creative Gathering Space and fundraising, fundraising, yes.
Hi, this is one time when I didn't take notes and I wish I did, but I was so enthralled in our, our group discussion. We were blessed to have so many great, talented artists and people in marketing. So some of the things that we spoke about were, you know, the marketing strategies of being able to do more now that the COVID is, you know, upon us, to do more of this type of thing. And a lot of more Zoom-type things where we can reach out, save money on travel and be able to offer classes and workshops and groups where we can all talk together and come to kind of creative ways to create things. So we talked about that. And we also spoke about the fundraising part of it. You know, our, our community is doing so many different types of fundraising. I come from a church background and a community, the community center is doing fundraising and JTF is doing fundraising. So we talked about different levels of fundraising, not only within our community, but also outside of the communities where we could get sponsorships for different programs and different events. And that's another way of bringing other people into our community and sharing in arts and culture and history. And then we, we went into the micro-events and programming and having a shared space where we could bring in artists and do performances. And, you know, again, bring people from the outside in to learn about history and culture. And what we realized was that there's so many different spaces within Japan Town that we can actually use. One of the places, you know, that is underutilized are the churches. We have, you know, social halls and we have a beautiful altar that Mark and Brenda have used before and then, you know, wonderful performances on our altar and the acoustics is great in there. Wouldn't you agree? Yeah. So, you know, we talked about that. And we also talked about bringing the Japanese speakers more into focus because they are into so much of the, the culture, the Japanese culture. And, and they want to share. I think that we just need to be more open and more inviting and more, make it a safe space for them so that they can come in and, and teach things that are very traditional. And also not so traditional, but kind of new wave things. And then the last thing we talked about was next generation, bringing in the children more. This strategies is a good way to bring children in. And someone, I think it was Sheridan, who said, you know, now that children have all this free time, let's, let's get them involved. Let's get them, you know, because they're good in tech and, and they're also very creative. So, yeah, so we had a very good group.
Thank you, Alice. Thank you for sharing. Sounds like a lot of great things came out of that group. Next, we would like to have group four, which focused on the 2021 Exploration of the Covenant and also the Community Council.
Yeah, so we had two very meaty topics. And kind of a general comment from both of them is that the report is quite, the current report is very prescriptive in that it presumes certain actors will implement, you know, these strategies rather than exploring, you know, you know, whether different actors and/or methods might be appropriate to implement these strategies. Going to the Community Council, there are a lot of questions about the Council, including like the scope of it, who would be involved, term limits. There was, there was concern that the concept of one, of having like one voice could be exclusive and stifling other voices. And there was a lot of discussion about how a community council should be developed as a separate entity that is developed organically and promotes inclusion. There was discussion about whether a community council might be better off, better served as like a collaborative platform as opposed to like a specific decision-making body. And that the implementation of the timeline in October is too soon without proper community vetting. There was also questions about how the Arts Action Committee would be implemented, since that's not currently detailed in the how-to section of the report. Moving on to the, the addressing the covenants, the exploration of the covenants, there was discussion about how the technic, the JTF Ad-Hoc Technical Committee was discussed in the report as a negotiating body when previously it had been presented even to members of the committee as a research body, as a resource to the, resource to the community and not as, as a negotiating body that would speak for the community. There was discussion that the report should, should be more specific about the challenges as well as like exploring different options to respond to the covenants, including, like it kind of skips to like this negotiating to developers without looking at some of the previous steps that may need to take place, such as refreshing the community on the scope and language of the covenants, analyzing how much leverage the community may have. And also, the report should acknowledge the uncertainty of how 3D investments they proceed and the need to plan for a diverse array of strategies in response to this uncertainty. So yeah, that's my, that's, I hope that we, we talked about a lot of things and a lot of concerns were brought up. And so I hope my summary helped to encapsulate that with respect to these strategies.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm looking forward to looking at your notes and your recording and continuing this discussion with all of you. Next, we have group five, which is focusing on the CDC, a Community Development Corporation, a Community Land Trust, a Community Investment Fund, either one of those options, and also on the topic of affordable housing. So yes, group number five, please. Thank you.
The, on the topic of CDC, a Community Development Corporation, Community Land Trust, or a Community Investment Fund, one of the early questions that came up in the discussion was whether or not in the need to attract capital, do you think about what type of activity would attract money? Or do you think about what the community needs? And through our conversation, what was interesting is we came around to realizing that being very authentic about what a community needs is really important. And that if we do that well, that we can be confident that the money would follow. And part of that came from our discussion about potential partners. And we realized that there are many situations where some of the objectives of the community might have certain value alignments with communities outside of the JA community. And that could be with other religious organizations or philanthropists who see an alignment of the values with what the, what Japan Town is trying to achieve. Other partners include government, obviously, and also the possibility of trying to draw dispersed elements of the Japanese American community back to Japan Town. On the second topic about affordable housing, we did have some very specific edits about the, this, the title, which we'll come back to on Nina. But the, the discussion I thought was interesting in that similarly, defining objectives is a really important part of this discussion. One point which was made, which is, is one of the things which the community would need to agree on is that Japan Town is no longer a viable residential community in the sense that the JA community has already been very much dispersed. And maybe trying to pull JA back to Japan Town isn't necessarily the prime objective, but more to make it a more effective gathering place. So if it is, if it is a place which can house nonprofit organizations, maybe provide performance spaces which would draw in JA artists, that the focus should be more on, on, on drawing people in rather than trying to pull back residents. And then the discussion also touched upon whether or not trying to bring in artists that would reside in the community would enhance the community. And, and then there was also a question raised as to whether or not too much housing or too much focus on housing would make a neighborhood less viable or less vibrant commercially. So there are a lot of value judgments that need to be made and some agreement objectives, which I think are key for the community to agree upon in order to actually make a lot of these strategy decisions. And so our short discussion really brought, you know, it's revealing in that sense.
Kenta, this is Darryl. May I add just a key comment on the second part, Nina, real quick? So, yeah, so the group, several people in the group, more than two, did not think it was advisable that we have such a high percentage of 40%. We don't understand how that number came to be. And the thinking is we need to really think hard if a percentage is needed because the economics of doing housing to serve those folks that we're, that we're saying that would be important to bring back may not be a realistic number that a developer or nonprofit could, could achieve. And we don't want to discourage them from coming to the community and trying to help us. So I think before the final report is written, I request that the executive committee or whatever the process is, that we may need to have a fuller discussion about that percentage. And Kenta, you might want to elaborate on that.
Oh, yeah, I, I mentioned at the beginning of my summary that I'd get back to Nina on the specifics of that.
Okay. Absolutely. Regarding housing, you know, I understand that Japan Town, you know, to an extent, a residential base could also help to support the businesses. So I don't quite understand how it would detract from businesses, but I do understand that a focus on drawing people, the community, in is essential. And a community land trust or an investment fund could help do that by creating below-market rate rentals for businesses, organizations, and yeah, cultural organizations, et cetera. So, you know, I think that one of those three options could support a vast variety of businesses and organizations.
Yeah, Nina, that viewpoint is also represented in our discussion. So it's, there's, there's no need to debate it here. But there were, my point was that there's a variety of viewpoints on this topic.
Yeah.
The challenge will be bringing the community together to agree as to what the objectives should be.
Yeah, I think that, that's really true. I think that there needs to be opportunity for us to come up with the values as a collective. And then based on those shared values, then we can move forward. And I know that Little Tokyo Community Council, they have a retreat every year to talk about their values and visions and goals. So I think that, I don't know, we, we definitely do need to create more opportunities for that, that we, we can move from that space, is, is what I'm hearing from a lot of groups. I feel that. Okay, well, I want to thank everyone for sharing what came out of your groups. Is it okay if I share the notes with everybody? That everyone can take a look at the notes? Is everyone comfortable with these notes being shared? Give me a thumbs up. Okay. Great. All right. Well, I just want to, before we conclude today, I definitely would like to pass it to Steve Nakajo, the Executive Director, to make some final comments.
Thank you very much, Nina. First of all, I want to really extend our appreciation to all of the recorders and the facilitators that joined us today, members of the board as well, volunteers, but also all of you today. We're about almost 40 minutes, 50 minutes over the hour of when we were going to conclude. And I definitely appreciate your patience as we worked out this whole challenge of going into a group with this Zoom concept. But the final goal was met by having all of you in your groups. We know that an hour isn't enough, but we know that we need that process by which we can get feedback. And again, it doesn't end with this town hall meeting. It doesn't end with the submitted date in July. That 122 pages that we have as the CHES auxiliary is going to be our blueprint for Japan Town, even though the CHES is supposed to be the city and county's document for three years. We have emphasized to the department and we emphasize to the city that it is a living, breathing document that takes into consideration all the work for the quality of the CHES document to us developing the CCHES document, which is made up of feedback from the town hall meetings, from individuals, from interviews. And again, tonight, with your debriefing from each group, it sounds like there was definitely some hearty, strong conversations. I particularly appreciate the frankness and the directors in terms of what folks saw within that report that we submitted still in the draft. But the more important thing is now it's moved from the city to seven key areas to Japan Town, through our mechanism, out to the community at large two weeks ago. And with you individuals that have taken upon yourself to step up and join us today, you are most valuable and we know all of you. And if we don't know you, we'll make sure we know you because we're all part now of the authorship of this CHES report. So I just wanted to say that, as well as the difficulty and the challenges we emerged into the second year implementation of the program of the cultural districts integrated within our duties and tasks of Japan Town Task Force with our living committees, land use, cultural heritage, sustainability. And as most of you know, we're very close to achieving some challenges with the Peace Plaza, which is a major campaign that's going to come up as we move through the process. So I just wanted to thank each one of you for all of your time, your extra time, your dedication. And I really, really appreciate it personally. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so much for putting in the extra time to really be here for this, for this process. And we appreciate all of your candidness and sharing very valuable perspectives. So we look forward to continuously receiving your input. And again, we will continue to incorporate what you have shared with us today. So we're looking forward to staying in touch with all of you. So I would like to conclude the meeting here unless there are any last closing comments that people like to make.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Be safe, please. See you, America. See you, folks. Take care.